Good evening, welcome to our council meeting. This April 4th, I mean, excuse me, May 4th. Can't get that wrong because it's May the 4th be with you today, isn't it? Okay. If you haven't seen social media today, you have now. I'm Jen Daniels, I'm the Mayor of Gilbert and we have our awesome council here and we are just grateful to be able to do some of these presentations and proclamations. So the way that this will work tonight, we have three. The first will be our recognition of Mercedes Fernandez for the Youth of the Year and we'll have you come up in just a second, Mercedes. And then Councilmember Anderson will assist us with National Public Works Week and a special recognition for one of our town employees. And then, we have Highland Junior High here. I didn't hear you Highland Junior High. Alright, Highland Junior High is here, they have received a pretty great award and so we'll have Councilmember Taylor assist us with that. So first off, we do want to invite Mercedes down. And Mercedes, come on down Mercedes. And parents and family, why don't you guys come down too because we don't get anywhere without a good team behind us, right? So Mercedes was one of our Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee Youth this year and for those of you who don't know, I see some scouts back there. We want you to aim high here for the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee. We have two students from each of our high schools represented as well as four at-large community members. So we look mostly for sophomore and juniors to participate in Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee and they engage in statistics that last the entire school year. And Mercedes has been one of these students that has really stood out to us. She's really gone above and beyond and I'm going to grab the real script here and the plaque for you too. Alright, let me tell you what Mercedes has done for this community because she's one to watch. You are a sophomore, right? At Gilbert Classical Academy? She looks older than that, that's why I had to double check. Mercedes volunteered at numerous Town of Gilbert and Community events these past eight months, including the Global Village Festival, April Pool's drowning prevention luau which was in conjunction with our fire department, the Gilbert Water Festival which is a terrific program teaching fifth graders, third, fourth graders, thanks. All the importance of water conservation and what water does in the desert. And also, the 12 Ks of Christmas run. You haven't had any weekends off this whole year. She also volunteers at GCA Swim and Dive and Soccer Clubs, Feed My Starving Children, and at Petco. We would like to congratulate her tonight and thank her for all of her service to the community. Mercedes, introduce your family for us and especially cute kids. Okay?
This is my dad, I don't know, like, this is Ryan Fernandez, my padre. These are all my sisters, my half-sister, Anjali, and my mom.
Thank you so much and I will let you guys take, if you guys want to take a picture but we had to highlight the family, so we'll let you guys move that way and Mercedes and I'll stand here and take a picture. Did you get a family photo? Okay, well, stay right there, family, okay. Well, let's give a nice round of applause for Mercedes. We are really proud of you, thank you. Scott?
You know, as the Gilbert family, which includes all of us in this room and everybody in this community, we take for granted the clean water that's delivered to our homes, the trash that's taken away from our homes, and the streets that are in good repair and the streetlights, the traffic signals, we take that all for granted. And it's sometimes misunderstood or not understood at all that this has come as a result of some very hard work. You know, we always, we think of our first responders, our police and fire and the important work they do, but there's a segment of our team here in Gilbert that I like to call our Quality of Life Responders. And the Quality of Life Responders are those who work in our Public Works Department that provide all the needed services that provide such a good quality of life here in our community of excellence. And to recognize that, there's a couple of things I want to do tonight. First, I want you to read part of a proclamation about Public Works Week in which we recognize those team players that provide those great services. And I see Jessica here, congratulations to you also for your team and for all the work that they do. Let me read just a part of this proclamation and then talk about something else we'd like to do. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives and whereas the health and safety and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. Now therefore I, Jen Daniels, Mayor of the Town of Gilbert, do hereby proclaim May 21st through the 27th, 2017 as National Public Works Week. And again, we want to recognize that entire team during that week for the great work that they do in providing such a great infrastructure in our community. Now also, we have a very special person who has been particularly recognized for his work in providing this infrastructure. David Fabiano, our town engineer, was recognized as one of the top 10 Public Works Employees in the country, I think it was, through the American Public Works Association. And I'm going to invite up Loretta Flick. Is Loretta here? Loretta's here, she's going to present David with a special award.
Okay, I made a few, I made a few notes, just, my name's Loretta Flick, I'm the President of APWA for the Arizona Chapter. APWA is the American Public Works Association and there's over 800, almost 900 members of our association, but I just want to briefly just kind of give you an idea of just how important this award is, especially to the public works community. So the purpose of the top 10, this is a Top 10 Leader Award nationally, so of all the public works people in the nation, David was selected as one of the top 10, which is just a phenomenal recognition. The Top 10 Leader of the Year is really to inspire excellence and dedication in public service for outstanding achievement in public works. This award was established over 50 years ago and provides the opportunity to single out 10 individuals who represent the finest in the public works profession. I made a note for you if you don't mind. I want to just say something in particular about David. Our board put together a packet that we sent to national to nominate David. And one of our board members actually went to college with David and asked if she could write the letter, Chris also is an engineer at the City of Phoenix. And I'm just going to read one sentence that she wrote, knowing David since college. "Mr. Fabiano's dedication to the public work field, his support of others throughout his career, his enthusiasm and professional involvement in APWA over the years, and his lifelong commitment to his community service to his family make him deserving of a sustained recognition." Mr. Fabiano has over 23 years of experience in the public works field and has spent the majority of his career working as a consultant engineer in both small and large-scale public works projects for public agencies. And over 17 years he's spent with one company. In putting the packet together we sent Dave, I want to just let you know that in 23 years David has worked for two companies and that's really the quality of a leader. 17 with the last company and now you guys have him as the city engineer, so I'll just kind of end my comments there, but the Arizona Chapter is, and me especially, is proud to present David with a Top 10 Award for the Year. One other thing is sitting up here, there's a letter from our United States Senator Jeff Flake. Congratulations, I'll just read it. "Congratulations on being honored as one of the top 10 outstanding public work professionals. This great distinction reflects your pursuit of excellence and dedication to the American public works. It's an honor to be among the many to congratulate you for this accomplishment." So along with everyone else, Jeff Flake.
We'll move to the center here with the photo.
I'd like to invite the Highland Junior High team and faculty to come on up here and join Alright, I'm going to have you come on over here a little bit, it centers in the camera here. Okay, so when we asked for a clap earlier, it just wasn't, it hasn't been asked because I wanted, I'm going to have to teach you guys a clap because I see the Cub Scouts here and Cub Scouts, can you wave your hands? I'm a Cub master, so here's what we need to teach you before we get into this award because they definitely earned this. It's called the Seal of Approval. Have you ever heard the Seal of Approval clap Cubs? Here's what you do, everybody put your arms out straight like this, both arms, okay? And on three, you clap. One, two, three. Okay, that's the Seal of Approval and we're going to come back to that in just a minute. But this Highland Junior High team has done some pretty cool things, so I'm going to ask the lucky person standing here next to me to introduce herself, introduce the team and the great accomplishment that we're here to celebrate.
Okay, my name is April Lesher, I'm the librarian at Highland Junior High. And we have here Cambry Boyster and she's a Lego puzzle box instructor. We have Jackson Bonham and he's also a Lego puzzle box instructor. And we have Dallin Hanson, Lego puzzle box instructor. We have Seth Arnold and Caleb English, they are our 7th grade welcomingers. And we put together a video for the, and other things, but the video you'll see here in a minute, for the Follett Challenge. And Follett wanted 21st century skills demonstrated in libraries, innovative and cutting edge, but one thing I thought that our community here in Gilbert and then especially our school that sets us apart, a lot of schools are teaching coding and Lego puzzle box making, but maybe not that one, but is that our students are compassionate and they're brave and they invite others in. And I think that's worth, that's the best 21st century skill that there is. And so these wonderful students here demonstrated that and they took leadership in doing, you'll see in the video, but in instructing classes during lunchtime so that there's always a place for those who maybe don't know how to fit in junior high, it's a tough age, that they can fit in. And these kids are ambassadors and they're welcoming and they're bright and intelligent, but they are kind overall.
Wonderful, I think that's great. And you didn't tell us a bit about what they produced? Can you tell us a bit about that and then we're going to ask Heather to run it.
So they, during lunches, one of the things that Lego puzzle box builders came up with first are, they came to me and they were showing me these puzzle boxes and they were incredible. And if you haven't seen them, go to YouTube and watch them. And I said, would you create, would you host a class, because I can't make them, would you host a class during lunch? And they did. And they were great about inviting in students from diverse backgrounds and as well as students with special needs and making them feel welcome and teaching them the skill of, hey, let's all make this puzzle box. So they became the instructors during lunchtime as well as making everybody feel included. And then we have Caleb and Seth here and they're during, these guys are 8th graders and Caleb and Seth are wonderful because they are the friendship project, meaning they see students who maybe don't know what to do or put their headphones on and just want to play their cellphones during lunch and they welcome them and play games with them and say hello to them, invite them to eat with them, and makes our library exciting and innovative and they show them new things that they've learned and tell them about what's going on in the school.
Well, thank you, and we have a short video clip to learn a little bit more about this wonderful project and these young people. So Heather, if you'd go ahead and run that.
Hi, I'm Evan, I have been through a lot of schools, I never usually made any friends. Even though I came to Highland, I have made a lot of friends here in the library, a lot of friends here in the library. I read books with my friends, I eat lunch with them here, and it's usually just a lot
I'm Grant and I'm in Best Buddies and Best Buddies is about helping students with special needs with their social skills and being good friends with them so they can be happy.
What I love about Best Buddies is that we're going to meet new people and make more friends.
What I love about Best Buddies is we get to meet all these cool people and we get to spend more time with them.
Nothing about Best Buddies that I would mention.
Code Club program was developed by local community member Kelly Smith, MIT graduate, and the students have to complete tasks such as develop a game, remix a game, code a website. These are really fun and exciting for the students, but in addition to those tasks, before students can level up, they are required to do other things such as help a newbie or assist another student with a project. This creates a culture of camaraderie and friendship and a healthy competition.
I'm Matthew and we're in CoCo together, we help each other out a lot and whenever I need help on a game, he's one of the first people I go to. When I was working on it with Data, one of my first projects, he taught me how to use them, it was pretty good.
Working on a game where you have to let the guy named Dan eat as many donuts as he can and he can't touch the broccoli and gets touched by the donuts.
I'm Ivan and I'm a student at Highland Junior High and I developed this app called the Boy Scout App. This app has an online store and it has merit badge requirements for Boy Scouts of America. And I can help people in Code Club to design apps.
I'm working on a recent game, it's a full-fledged RPG and it's been in process for a while, but I think I'm close to finishing.
So this is a cube that's in progress, we are in the process of color coding it and filling in empty spaces, we're trying to make a drawer this size that can fit one
I just eat alone, play alone, walk alone, talk alone, I just don't like about that. When I, when I saw the library, I want to check something new in there, make me feel better. I just saw people talking to each other and that's a little bit made me feel better. When someone said hi to me and I kind of said hi to them back and we just talk, eat, all that stuff, that's, that's made my, that's made my day.
Isn't that great? So to Mrs. Lesher, the Highland Junior High team and everyone who's helping to be a force for good, on three, we're going to give them a Seal of Approval. Ready? Arms out. One, two, three. Thank you.
I did forget to say, this is our Principal Lance Smith, sorry. And he wrote an incredible letter of recommendation for our library, so he was an integral part of our winning and we did win $30,000 for, they won $30,000 for the library.
Seal of Approval for Principal Smith. Thank you. We do have a plaque here that we'd like to present to the team here, so why don't we bunch up here and then we'll get a few little photographs here. Mayor, if you'll join us and then if you have any other final words after a quick picture here. Come on in here.
Thank you, I just want to touch on a couple of proclamations and presentations, Heather, can you, I mean, community events, can you help us Heather? And at this time, we'll also invite all of the scouts down to the front and ask them to please just follow Councilmember Cook there, he'll lead and guide you. Alright, we do have some concerts in the park, May 11th and May 25th at the Water Tower Plaza. The Gilbert Senior Center announcement and celebration is May 17th at 11:00 AM at the Senior Center, that's going to be a lot of fun, there's a good group that gathers there. And there is a Memorial Day service, May 29th at 9:00 AM as well. Also, the farmer's market hours have changed, they're back to their summer hours, so they're open from 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM in downtown Gilbert as well. So, thank you Heather. Alright, we are going to move to the invocation and pledge of allegiance and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance and Councilmember Cook will assist us in getting the scouts
Well, we're going to have Ethan come up here to help us lead our pledge of allegiance, but all of us, could we all please stand? Ethan, we're going to face that way.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you Ethan. Well, what we like to do here is I'm going to pass the microphone down. If you could introduce yourself and maybe what pack or what troop you're in, that'd be great. And I'm going to go around the corner and grab a gift for you which is actually a United States pocket constitution. So we'd like you to memorize that and we'll test you the next time you come here. How about that? Anyways.
My name, my name's Easton, I'm in Troop 873.
My name's Cameron and I'm in Troop 873.
I'm Harrison and I'm in Troop 873.
I'm Ethan and I'm in Troop 873.
I'm Camden Cook and I'm in Troop 56.
I'm Cameron Hamilton, I'm in Troop 56.
I'm Jackson Stevens and I'm in Troop 56.
Colin Harris from Troop 56.
I'm Rock Lindell from Troop 56.
I'm Adam Almeida from Troop 56.
I'm Ashton Brown from Troop 56.
I'm Cade Scowles from Troop 56.
Josh Ernst with Troop 56.
Ken Brown with Troop 56.
Well, we appreciate your commitment to serve at this capacity and what you do for a community. Can we have a round of applause for our scouts today?
At this time, we'd like to invite Pastor Joe Benzinger from Redeemer Bible Church to the Front to provide us with an invocation this evening, thank you.
Alright, join me in prayer, please. Well, God, every year, the first Thursday of November is the National Day of Prayer and I know of at least six churches now that are praying for this group of people here, our town council, who are crying out to you on their behalf that they would be a blessing to this community, that they would expose evil, that they would fight for what's right, that they would, that their decisions would allow us to live quiet and peaceful lives here in this community. We thank you for the way that you have worked in them and through them already and pray that you would continue to do that even today in this meeting. Allow them to follow your will, allow them to follow your ways and be used by you whether they recognize that or not. God, you work through them, you bless this community through them, so do that work, please, again tonight, not only them here, but also our state and our nation. Do these things, please, I pray, in Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you so much. We do recognize National Day of Prayer in Gilbert and we're grateful for all of those who are engaging. I think there's a big group gathered this evening and we're grateful for their efforts. At this time, the clerk will now conduct the roll call.
Mayor Jen Daniels?
Here.
Vice Mayor Victor Peterson?
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Eddie Cook?
Here.
Councilmember Bridget Peterson?
Here.
Councilmember Jordan Ray?
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Just checking, do we have the phone on, Chris? Okay, thank you, just in case Councilmember Ray is out of town, but he was planning on calling in, so we'll wait that. Alright, that moves us to the consent calendar and I look to Vice Mayor Peterson to assist us with the consent, oh, nope, actually, communications from citizens comes next. Do we have any requests to speak?
Mayor, I believe we have two. One was marked for public hearing, but I think they want communications from citizens, so if I get that wrong, they can correct me. But we'll start with Lacey, looks like Fran. And Lacey, as you come up, I'll just explain how this works, you get three minutes, you'll look to the podium for the lights. When the light turns yellow, you've got 30 seconds left, when it's red, you're out of time. Just state your name and whether or not you are a Gilbert resident for the record before you get started. You don't have to give us your address, just whether or not you're a Gilbert resident. Thank you. That's it.
Okay, and is it okay if my partner speaks after me?
Yes, in fact, is that Caroline?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, so I have you both, so you can both have three minutes each.
Okay, alright, my name is Lacey Fran and I am a Gilbert resident. Okay. Okay. Every 98 seconds, an American is sexually assaulted. Our youngest citizens are particularly at risk. In fact, according to the CDC, nearly 80% of these victims experience their first attack before the age of 25. Over half of those victims experience their first attack before the age of 18, before even graduating high school. Because of this growing epidemic, over 800 colleges and universities have adapted programs, like Culture of Respect, which teaches students the meaning of consent and how to protect themselves from becoming the victim. Research shows that these programs are working, but by the time most adolescents reach college, it may be too late. According to a study done by BMC's Women's Health, young women who participated in consent education programs held 40% to 50% lower rates of completed sexual assault attacks than women who did not receive this education. Sexual assault is defined as forced touching, kissing, coerced intercourse, or rape. Data reported by the Advocates for Human Rights indicates there are many long-term physical and psychological effects caused by sexual assault. Victims experience higher rates of unplanned pregnancies, sexually transmitted diseases, genital mutilation, anxiety, depression, post-traumatic stress disorder, and suicide. Trauma victims often find themselves disassociated with school, work, family, and friendships. Lastly, sexually assaulted victims are 35 times more likely to be revictimized, according to the CDC. This is a serious and troubling issue, and in a safe town like ours, we'd like to think we are exempt from these kinds of statistics. We stand before you today to tell you that this is not the case. Carol and I, we're both raised in Gilbert, have attended Gilbert Public Schools since elementary, and are both victims of sexual assault. We are two of many. One in four girls and one in six boys are sexually abused by the age of 18, and teens 16 to 19 years of age are three times more likely than the general population to be victims of rape, attempted rape, or other forms of sexual assault. This data from the CDC only scratches the surface of a deeply rooted problem in our society. It is affecting our youth, both nationally and locally. In the Gilbert Public Schools District, experts have constructed an abstinence education program called Choosing the Best, to educate junior high students on the dangers of having intercourse at a young age. This abstinence-only program does not include enough information about consent to fit all in the eighth grade level, and it lacks the accurate presentation of real-world situations that students are statistically likely to encounter in high school and beyond. As high school students, we receive zero additional sex education. So where do high school students get their sex education from? In a poll we conducted at our school for research, over 50% of the students answered "from friends" or "the internet." In the time it took me to present this startling information to you this evening, two more Americans were sexually assaulted.
Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Caroline, you'll also have three minutes. Yellow means 30 seconds left, and red means you're out of time. Thank you. Oh, and please state your name and whether or not you're a Gilbert resident before you get going. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Caroline Chilton, and I'm a Gilbert resident. I'll be doing the solution part. Consent is an active and conscious choice to engage in an action accordingly, without some active and conscious resolve to engage in a sexual act, there can be no consent. The It's On Us campaign created by former Vice President of the United States, Joe Biden, provides clear guidance on consent. The organization's website states, "Consent is voluntary and mutual and can be withdrawn at any time, and past consent does not mean current or future consent." In other words, sexual assault occurs if there is no clear expression of yes or no to a sexual act. This seems like common sense, yet the statistics show that the concept is difficult to grasp without appropriate education. A 2007 Department of Justice survey found that 35% of sexual assault victims did not report the crime because it was unclear that it was a crime or that harm was intended. This statistic is a prime example of why we need to further our sex education in the Gilbert Public School system. The Southern Arizona Center Against Sexual Assault and Paint Phoenix Purple Campaign, two nonprofit organizations, have contacted us and are willing to educate the students in the GPS district. They are trained experts on community outreach. Both nonprofits will assess community values and adjust the curriculum accordingly. The program wants to stress they aren't advocating teenagers to be sexually active, but instead teaching them consent to protect themselves and respect others. We want to implement the consent education during assemblies where females and males will be split up. We want to be the society that changes the pattern. We want to lead the upcoming generation. We want accountability. We want other girls and boys to feel safe around their peers, in and out of school. Our youth needs to understand how to respect the physical boundaries of others, and feel empowered to set boundaries of their own as well. My name is Caroline Chilton, and my partner's name is Lacey Fran. We attend Mesquite High School, and although we are seniors, we will not let this issue rest until our fellow classmates get the sex education they desperately need. In addition, we have a research paper on the proposal plan for this, so if anybody would like to check our citations or our information, we have it right here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And while current law prohibits us from actually commenting on what you've brought forward, I just want to say that if your intent is to change the world, you guys are well on your way. So congratulations on being articulate and brilliant young women. Keep up the great work. Are there any more requests to speak from Communications from Citizens?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. That moves us to the consent calendar, and I look to Vice Mayor Peterson to assist.
Mayor, we had no request to pull any items from consent, as far as I know, and so I'll just double-check that now. Okay. Seeing non-Mayor, I move to approve items four, five, six, seven, and pull forward item 13, and we'll look to Councilmember Cook on that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I move that the council will approve the appointment of three regular board members to the Parks and Recs Board, with terms beginning on May 13th, 2017, and ending May 12th of 2020. Bob Fran, Lan Schaefer, Christopher Warden.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 6-0 vote. Thank you. That moves us to the public hearing items on our agenda, and all items will be heard at one public hearing. And Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Peterson, have there been any requests to speak on these items?
I haven't heard of any, Mayor, but we could double-check. Oh, looks like we do have number 10. I know that I wanted to talk about number 10, but I don't know about any others.
That's the same one.
10?
Yes, please, thank you.
All right. So at this time, I'll open the public hearing on Agendas eight and nine, and close the public hearing on Agenda items eight and nine, and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve items eight and nine from our agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 6-0 vote. Thank you. That moves us to Agenda item 10. And just for clarification on our agenda, this is the first reading of our capital improvement plan. So we need feedback for this and permission, really, to declare it a public document. So that's really what we're seeking permission or a vote on tonight. We are not adopting the capital improvement plan. That will come in June, but we are declaring this item a public document and continuing the public hearing on this item for the next 30, 30 days or so, maybe a little longer, but at least 30 days. All right. So who would like to kick off the conversation here on the CIP? Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thanks. That's a good clarification, because I think there's some things here that I'm, I'd like to see some work on. Let me give you a couple of, first off, I got the summary documents in the packet, but I didn't see the full draft as, I don't know if that's available, or if I can get a copy of that, but that would be dandy. And then there's a couple of things that I'm not sure that, you know, we've agreed on as a council that are in here, and, you know, I'll just call out one of them as an example, the Public Safety Training Facility. We talked about that a lot. I'm not sure that we have consensus on it. Last I heard, the total funding request on that was about $60 million. In this document, it's about $73.8 million. So there's a couple of things on that that I'd like to learn a little bit more about, and how it went up, 13 million, and I think we were wondering how we could get it down 13 million, or something like that, right? And then the second thing that I know we haven't had a lot of discussion on is some of the assumptions on how to pay for a number of the projects, parks, and some of the assumptions on debt, and those things that I think would be really important for us to talk a little bit. So, high-level, Mayor, that's a couple of concerns with the initial data here, and I thought I'd just stop at that point, but thank you for the time.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. Any other comments from council? Vice Mayor Peterson.
Mayor, I had a quick question for, for staff on that. I appreciate the clarification earlier. Is it appropriate for us to move to amend the preliminary plan at this point? Can we do that, or?
Yes. Yes, the answer is yes.
Vice Mayor Peterson, I guess technically we could. It might be most appropriate, though, to go through the entire public hearing duration, and then make amendments before we adopt the plan for the coming fiscal year, would be my recommendation, so that we have the full breadth of time to discuss all items that are contained within the plan.
Okay. Well, I only had really one item that I, and Councilmember Taylor already mentioned it. So there was one item that I would like to slightly adjust, if we can. And as alluded to, there are concerns about the Public Safety Training Facility, the scope, the size, the total cost. There's a lot of different angles, I'm sure, on that from different individuals. So what I'd like to do is revise the amount that's budgeted for fiscal year 18, down by about $3 million. So from $4 million to $1 million. That would leave enough space for a phase. Depends on the phase. I'm specifically thinking of potentially at least looking at design of a driving course. We could at least find out what that would cost, so we can decide whether or not we would do something like that. But so that $1 million would be enough for, for a design on one of the pieces. And so that would free up capacity, since that is all general fund, that would free up capacity in the general fund, buy more than enough cash, and this alludes to the next item, so I'll go in more detail, but to keep the property tax levy down. In fact, potentially, that would leave an extra 1.7. We'd actually save money if we did that. So, anyway, that's my suggestion, and so, I mean, we can go through the public hearing process, I guess that's, that's fine, but I'd prefer to actually make that change now, if we could.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Peterson.
Mayor?
Yes.
I don't know if the Vice Mayor would consider adding to that amendment to lower the 2020, down 10 million, to get us to the $60 million that we've actually been talking about, the documents that we've been provided, because this is the, you know, really the first time another 13's been put onto that, so I figure the CIP at a minimum should be consistent with what we've, at least I've been given information on, in terms of substantive information, instead of one little line here, so.
Kelly, would you like to address that?
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Just for some clarification on that question, the design and construction of the building is still the $59 million we've been speaking about. What you're seeing in the CIP is that there's about $14 million of land that's associated with this project that has been, was spent in prior years, and so that's why you see it as a project total. But the scope moving forward has not changed.
Oh, I see that. Thank you, Kelly. I appreciate that clarification. Okay, so I, thank you. That's a good clarification, so I think that makes my comment moot on that, Mayor, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. Any other comments from council on this Agenda item? Councilmember Cook?
Well, let me just share, I've spent probably a large amount of my free time, which is not much, really spending a lot of time just diving into a lot of the nuts and bolts of this public training facility. And I have visited free training facilities, you know, here in, in the metropolitan area. I've met with the Mesa team, I've met with the Chandler team, and I have met with the City of Glendale's team. And I've had many, many meetings with both our chiefs and their, and their teams about this facility. And I have, I think I have put them through the grinder. I have, I won't say I made much friends out of this, but I do want to say, this is not my field of expertise. I went ahead and spent just a tremendous amount of time being very open-minded through the whole process. But I will tell you that as we move into the future, these training facilities that are out there today will not be able to provide us what I thought would be regional partnerships capability, where we could, you know, either provide our own funding to provide us some time on these facilities and so forth. But when I look at how Mesa will grow, how Chandler will grow, how Glendale's going to grow, especially they already have partnerships in place, based upon our needs, that we need to do the liability issues that we have, that I foresee potentially happening from a legal perspective, when we don't even have the ability to train our, our teams today to adequately prepare us for some of what I would call the future legalities of the, you know, that could hurt us due to any situations, even for our team members as relates to their own training, to make sure that we keep them safe, as well as the public safe. I don't see really any change that we need to do here as relates to what's being requested in this, in the CIP. I tried really hard to figure out ways to lower that cost, minimize that cost. And again, I've put a lot of effort in, and I can, I mean, probably more effort on, on this particular topic than any effort that I have done in the six years I've been on board. And, you know, I'm here to say that what they're asking for, I'm in full support of. So I just share that with you, as just my observation, my journey over the last, you know, three to four weeks with this, and I think I thoroughly have done a, as much as I can with the amount of time I have, a fairly thorough job through this.
Thank you, Councilmember Cook, and thank you for your efforts. Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Cook, for all of the time that you've taken to do the research that you've done, because it has helped to answer a lot of questions that I've had. Every time that I've gone to staff or met with staff about this item, they've always had really great responses, because between their homework and your homework, we've been able to follow through with that. And then as I watched the news the other day and heard that Phoenix alone needs 400 police officers, just Phoenix, never mind DPS, anybody else, any other agencies, Maricopa County. And when I think about that, combined with the fact that these training facilities, I know, are already booking up for their own uses in the other communities, that's, that makes even less time and less space for our own police officers and our own firefighters to get the training that they need. I don't see a reason to decrease this at this time. I think that the responsible thing for me as a council member, the way I've been looking at this, is we don't know how much to ask for if we don't actually do the design for the build. I can't say okay to doing a phase of a build that I don't have a design for. I don't want to do a phase of a design for a build to potentially build that in the future. I think that the, the best way to move forward is to leave this in the plan, to move forward the way that we've been discussing, and to get the design and see where we go from there. I know it's a lot of money, and I've said that from the beginning, it's a hard pill to swallow, it definitely is. But our team has worked very hard to show us that through design, we are not looking for the Taj Mahal of training centers. We are looking for a good, sturdy, stable center that will carry us many years into the future. And as Mayor Daniels says many times when we're out in public, and I hear her speak, we need to plan for the future of this community. I'm not here just to plan for the next two years while I sit on this dais. I'm here to plan for the next 20 and 30 years, and I think this is the proper way to do that.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. Councilmember Anderson?
Just very quickly, I want to underscore again that this is a preliminary approval, and that I still have a list of a few items that I want to talk to Kelly and her staff about, but I want to keep this moving forward, because we have that opportunity.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. And I will just add my comments as well. Over the last many, many months now that we've been discussing this, I do believe that the business case has been made for the need of a public safety training facility in Gilbert. And I especially appreciate-
And I especially appreciate Councilmember Cook's continued outreach to neighboring communities to find out where we might be able to find efficiencies. That's how we work in Gilbert. We work with our neighbors very well in order to find ways. But given the needs for training and the need for new hires, as well as our public safety retirements that are going to be coming in the next several years, we do need to find ways to make sure that our team is the best trained. When people call 911, you expect someone to come to your door with the proper training in order to be able to meet the needs. And our police and fire departments do that, and they need continued training in order to keep up that skill. So I do believe the business case has been made for that. I think the question that we have as a council and that continues to come up is the size and scope and cost of the public safety training facility. And I do think that through design and through efficiencies gained through value engineering, we can find the right dollar amount to spend on this and provide the needed training. And so that's the sweet spot I think we're all looking for, is providing the right amount of training for the right dollar amount, and something that will help us plan for now and into the future, as Councilmember Peterson has indicated. I did want to just ask one quick question. Maybe Leah, as project lead, Leah, can you come up and assist us with this? And we're focusing on public safety training facility, because this is a conversation that we've had. The CIP actually includes many, many, many projects, including streets and a water treatment facility, continued expansion, and many other things that are very important to the community. This one's getting highlighted because of the ongoing discussion that we've had. But Leah, I understand that you're asking for $3.9 million. When do you expect the council to have another touch point? It's my understanding it will be before those dollars are expended and before, we have more touch points at this, before you actually go out for design.
Mayor, council, you are exactly correct. No monies would be expended on the design process without bringing that to council for consideration. So this is just leaving the funds in the budget for that opportunity, but we, no, no work would proceed without council approval.
And it's also my understanding that we can get to a schematic design before we, well before we ever reach the $3.9 million. So there's potential for us to spend much less than that, get really what we need out of design, and then have another touch point for the council to be able to say, are we going to go for final design now, which would be the expenditure of more of those design dollars, and obviously commit us for the construction piece. Am I articulating that correctly?
Mayor, councilmember, yes, again, you are correct. We would strive to reach schematic design, which would give us that perfect, as you described, kind of sweet spot of getting enough information to really get a fine-tuned cost estimate, hopefully much better, as Councilmember Taylor alluded to. But it also provides you with options and flexibilities on how the council would want to move forward.
And that would also include a conversation about funding sources for the actual construction?
Yes.
Okay. So that's an important piece, too, because right now we don't have dollars for the actual construction identified. We do have several options available to us, but we have not committed one way or the other to a design. So there's been previous conversations about going out for a public safety training facility bond. We may or may not make that determination based on design and final design costs. Okay. Does that, is that helpful, Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, if I may, thank you for making a couple of very, very important points, and I appreciate some of that summary, and agree with, agree with a lot of that, so I appreciate that. I do want to make sure that the timing of all of this is synced up. You know, Vice Mayor talked about the impact of this on the levy and things like that. So I guess, Patrick, I'm looking to you to make sure. So this goes out, this is going to come back, and we're going to be able to discuss and get feedback and make updates before we sign off on the final levy amount for the year. Are we syncing up those dates?
Mayor, Councilmember Taylor, in regards to the secondary property tax levy?
Right, because some of these bond assumptions will drive what that levy is. It's based on the projects in the CIP. Right, yeah. So if we send it out, but we adopt a levy after we adopt the actual CIP, that...
Kelly's ready to rescue you. Should we let Kelly rescue you?
Thank you, Mayor. That's probably good.
We know he knows, but it's 10 o'clock where he's been for the last four days, so we'll give him a break.
Mayor, councilmembers, so we did issue the bonds, and we have a repayment schedule. That repayment schedule is set. We have the bond proceeds, and we can use that for different projects. But changing which projects we do with the proceeds will not change the amount of our debt service each year. It remains the same at the $22.3 million for the next four years, and then changes from there.
And, excuse me, Mayor, Kelly, just for clarification, all of the bonds that were issued are for transportation projects, not for anything other than transportation projects?
Yes, that is correct.
So the current bond issues, the ones that we're paying a secondary property tax levy on for the next four years, that is streets dollars, nothing to do with this. If we decided to go to the voters and ask for an additional bond, that would have an impact on the secondary property tax levy, but nothing from this will impact that.
Yeah, I get the process, so I appreciate that. That's a good clarification. And maybe you can just let us know what streets, projects that are in the CIP, and make sure that we have alignment there. So as we're going through the peer review process here, that we can, you know, tick and tie those back and forth. So I think that's, that's important. So thank you for that clarification. And Mayor, if I can make another point here that perhaps we can think about, there's, there's a couple, when I talk about concern about the bond assumptions here, let me just call out another one. I know we've talked about public safety, but let's move to another topic here, the regional park in the south. Okay, so one of the assumptions here is that in 2021, potential parks' bonds, you know, total $118 million. You know, that's a pretty big deal. I know it's kicked out to year six to 10, so, you know, I understand that that's very prospective. But we really haven't had a good, healthy discussion on how we're doing that. And so for this document to go out as if this is the council's direction versus a staff recommendation, which is really what it is, I think it needs to be annotated like that. And, or anything that really we haven't put our stamp on needs to have an asterisk, or somehow annotated that the public knows, hey, we haven't, as a council, committed to a 2021 bond issuance, right? Because we haven't even had that discussion yet. So Mayor, I don't know if that's some direction with the motion that we can have, is have those called out that we haven't really committed to.
I think that's probably an adequate response to that, and I would support that, Councilmember Taylor, as well. Kelly, I think we have a note, I've seen it before, and I, we don't have that full draft here, but I've seen it before, where we have noted bond source, or sources of funds may change. And can you touch on that?
Mayor, council, that is correct. In the introduction to the CIP document when it's printed in full, we do indicate that only the first year is adopted. The other years are for planning purposes and may change before council adopts them. So indicating that years two and beyond are not fully adopted.
So essentially what you're saying, Kelly, is with the adoption of the CIP, which we're not doing tonight, we're just declaring it a public document, but with the adoption of the CIP, we are really only committing to fiscal year 18 expenditures. We are not committing to fiscal 19, 20, or, nor can we commit future councils to any type of funding.
Yes, Mayor, that's correct.
Okay.
Mayor and councilmembers, just a reminder, the document itself is more of a roadmap for projects. It goes, has to go hand in hand with our budget, and our budget has to then authorize those dollars from whatever spending or funding source you feel is most appropriate for that project. And if you'd like us to make that more clear in that document, we can certainly do that. But even adopting the CIP without then the corresponding funding in the actual budget document, we don't have the authority to move forward on projects.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification, Patrick. We appreciate it. Do you have?
Mayor, the only other thing I would just, just to continue to move this item forward, I'll just second the motion Vice Mayor made, and then we can just move forward with some motions, see how things go. But thank you for the time.
I might have missed the motion. Oh, there's no motion yet.
I'm sorry. I thought he put one out. I apologize.
He must be preparing one over here.
My bad. Okay.
Vice Mayor Peterson?
Mayor, I just wanted to make one other comment before we proceed. I went through the CIP and for fiscal year 18 specifically as well. And I will just say, the agenda says that we move to, we're going to move to accept the draft, draft CIP. So I don't, I feel like that has a little more significance than maybe others might feel. But anyway, the, I went through it, and there is $20 million in streets repair and replacement out of the debt. So that debt issuance of about $71 million, this is significantly more than one-fourth of our debt issuance here is going to repair and replacement projects. Now, I've, I've talked about my concern about this before, but for those who haven't heard it in any detail, you know, it's common with growth to have to lead the demand slightly with supply, knowing there's usually, also, knowing there's usually reimbursement, in this case, from developers, or at least knowing it's, it's a one-time cost.
Mayor?
However...
Vice Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. Point of order, can you just tell us the page number that you're referencing so we can follow along?
Sure. Actually, you'd have to do some math, but...
That's scary.
I know, right. So you could take the budget, let's see, which page, in our, not the revised PDF, but that may not help you. It's page 115. It's the, actually, I'm sorry, that's not true. It's page 119, starts on 119, 2017 streets bonds under the proposed capital improvement budget. If you look there, ST projects, ST 168 through 172 are all repair and replacement projects, mostly. There's one that has a piece of it's a water fund, but most of it's going to be paid for. It totals $20 million out of debt. Does that help, I hope? Anyway, I guess I should have had a display for that. Anyway, the bottom line is, I think that's a poor strategy, because when you have an ongoing plan to do repair and replacement out of debt, you're kind of chasing your tail, and you just don't get your bank for your buck. I just don't think it's a good strategy. I know that there are others on the council who have similar concerns, and I just want to point that out. I'm not going to move, move to change anything tonight on that, because it's a big dollar amount, and that's going to take some thought. But I would suggest that we, we think about the precedent we're setting there. In fact, if you do the math, and we're told by staff that we have about a $10 million a year shortfall in our streets repair and replacement. If you do the math, there's actually 13.4 million that's planned to be spent next year alone on streets repair and replacement. So it seems like we're keeping up with that ongoing demand. However, that's purely from debt. And so it seems like, although staff has said we haven't identified the ongoing revenue source for that purpose, it seems very much like we're headed down a path of answering that question with debt. I just don't support that. So anyway, with that, Mayor, I will move to approve item 10, amending it to reduce the, the amount for CIP project MF040, that's the Public Safety Training Facility, for clarification, down by $3 million.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Before we vote, I'd just like to, just make one quick side note about streets repair and replacement, just because I can. But highway user revenue funds, which is your gas tax, and your VLT, which is your vehicle license tax, is a fund, those are dollars that are paid and fund through the state budget and then come back to cities and towns to be able to appropriate. Unfortunately, and I, while I'm very grateful for the state's efforts, especially this budget cycle, to try to start restoring her funds, they have been swept by the legislature to the tune of millions of dollars to the town of Gilbert. These are dollars that our taxpayers are paying into the system for a specific purpose, that should be coming back to the cities and towns, not just Gilbert, but all cities and towns, in order to provide for the repair and replacement of streets, the wear and tear on streets. So I would encourage everyone to make sure their legislators know that we expect and would hope that they would adhere to the inclusion of that tax being paid to the cities and towns as it is intended. And so there is an option for some additional funding. Does it get us to the full $36 million annually? We have about a billion dollars' worth of streets assets in the community. So you factor that out with the lifespan, you're looking at about $36 million a year in repair and replacement. And we, in the town of Gilbert, have a very high standard for repair, which means that we extend the life of those streets as long as possible, and make sure that those are maintained properly. So I would encourage councilmember, or excuse me, Vice Mayor Peterson, that if you would like to consider you to see dollars coming back to the cities and towns for the intended purpose of the gas tax, that you make an effort to let senators and legislators, some of whom you know very well, know that we need those gas tax dollars back.
Mayor, just to respond...
I just got to stand on that soapbox for just a second.
And just to respond, I have, actually, many times, and I support, I support what you're saying. My only, my only question, well, two comments and then a question. One is, that is true, and while I agree that's not right and it needs to change, it still is what it is. And we have to plan, we have to plan for our needs regardless of what the legislature does. That's one. Two, I don't have the amount, and so this is kind of my question. I don't think, though, based on rough estimates I've heard, that even if it is fully restored, and I think you mentioned this, that that will be enough. And so we still have to solve this problem. Do you know the amount that we're being shorted each year? It's not to put you on the spot. I'm sincerely, I'm trying to find the answer, and I haven't gotten it yet.
So the sweeps have been going on since 2002, and Heather helped me look this up not too long ago. I think it was 14 to 16 million. Fif, I was in the window, $15.5 million that have been swept from the town of Gilbert since 2002, which is when the sweep started. So that is a, that's a lot. That's a lot of, that is, that is a lot of, a lot of opportunity for us that we've lost. And so I don't know what it is going to be this year. I know that there, the budget hasn't been finalized yet either this year, so. Councilmember Cook?
Mayor, I actually would like to move that if the motion that was presented is not approved, I'd like to move that we vote on the original agenda item.
So you can amend the motion to get back to the original motion and then have a second?
That would be my motion then.
Okay, so...
Got to get a sec, a vote on the first.
Understood.
Mayor and council, that's only after the vote on the...
You're right. He moved to amend, but we need a second on that. Do we have that?
You had a second on your motion.
So we had a first and a second on the original motion, which was to amend and remove $3 million. Now we've had an amendment to the motion by Councilmember Cook, and I'm looking for a second to that amendment to return it to its original form.
Point of order. I don't think that's in order.
It is, it is in order, actually. Through Robert's rules, you can do this. And if this first motion passes, the second motion, the second one is not, it dies for.
Well...
So do I need to second Councilmember Cook's motion, and then we need to vote on the first motion?
On the amended motion, yes.
So we're voting on what Councilmember Cook just amended, too?
We need a second first.
I did. I seconded it.
So we have a motion, amended motion by Councilmember Cook, and a second by Councilmember Peterson. Please vote on the amended motion. That motion carries with a 4-2 vote. Now we vote on the amended motion as we've just amended it. And so we will now ask for another vote. You're voting on the amended motion. The amended motion is its original form. Yes.
Mayor, Mayor, point of order here. So could you just restate what we're voting on right now?
Yes. Are you ready?
Because I'm not sure, let me just tell you where I'm trying to figure out.
Okay.
How are we voting on the Vice Mayor's motion if it was just amended to be the original motion? I mean, isn't it null? What would a yes vote be?
It is not. We're now on an, we now amended the original motion to be the recommended motion that was in our council packet.
So you don't get to vote on mine, because they successfully amended my motion?
That's different than what I thought you said before, in that it was this, whatever. Let's vote.
My apologies.
So again, we're...
Robert's rules of orders can get us sort of wrapped around.
So we're voting on my amended motion?
Correct.
Thank you.
That motion carries with a 4-2 vote. Thank you. All right. We are moving on. We are moving on to our next, I have to find my... We're going to recess our regular meeting and convene our special meeting at this time. We have two additional items that are still public hearing items, items 11 and 12. So we, again, just for clarification on item 11, we are not adopting the budget. We are setting, or excuse me, not adopting the levy. We are giving direction. There has to be a 30-day hearing in between the direction and the actual adoption of the levy. So just for clarification, that there's another bite at the apple. Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I think it is a preliminary adoption, but you're right, there's a final that's coming. So yes, there's another chance to talk about it. And I'll just make a note that we will on 12, so don't forget, on 12, we do have a request to speak when we get to the next item. Okay. So can we get, I have, I know everyone's got their little reading material. I know everyone's so excited, but I know, I know. So if...
Mayor, point of order. I'm sorry for the point of, are we on 11 or 12? Okay, we keep talking about the budget, that's 12.
Point of information.
Are you taking them just as a group discussion or just 11? 11? Thank you.
No problem. So, okay, so if we can go ahead, we can put up my first sheet that has the options. It's kind of moot now, but I'll just put it up there while I talk. And I'll keep this as short as I can, I promise. But the important, I gave this to Chris. Where'd they end up?
Home and household.
Oh, IT.
Switch the fishery to overhead.
Okay, that's fine. So the key number, and you'll see it on this first page, 9.2%. That's the number, 9.2%. That's the most important number I'll share, so I don't want that to get lost. I'll say that upfront. That's the size of the secondary property tax increase on the average property owner or existing property owners in Gilbert over the last two years if we adopt the levy as recommended by staff. The total levy increase over that time is actually much higher at 14, about 14.4%. So I'm, the 9.2 I'm talking about excludes new rooftops or new property. Now, I openly admit that during the last year's preliminary adoption, I didn't fully understand all these moving parts. But by the final adoption, I started to understand clearly that the average taxpayer was going to be paying more as a result, significantly more.
Kelly.
I won't spend a bunch of time unless there's questions. Yeah, so you'll see that at the top, the 9.2, just so you can see that. But I do want to show you where the numbers come from, and I'll do it really fast. Let's show my, the worksheets, the next page. This is the county assessor's worksheet. It's kind of blurry. Go ahead and zoom in a little bit, just so that you show the 4.9, and if you can. I just want to make sure people can read it. All right, there you go. That's good. So, that's actually 4.8. I said that wrong.
Mark, can you turn on the light? There's no shadow.
The key number is the 4.8 up there, and you'll see some other numbers, like you see our adopted levy and you see the resulting rate from last year. And all those numbers are going to coincide with other numbers you recognize, but the key one is 4.8. And that 4.8 there, under the appreciation, it's highlighted, there's an arrow, red arrow pointing to it. That is the amount that the average property owner or the existing property owner will pay more in taxes, assuming you kept the rate the same, and we roughly did. Not exactly, but we roughly did. We were close last year. So the simple math concept here, in case anyone's lost already, is that if you increase a number by 4.8%, and then you multiply that by the same rate as last time, then the resulting tax is also increased by 4.8%. It's pretty simple multiplication of rules there. Anyway, so let's go to the next slide. It's property tax summary. Okay, this was just an example, just move it up just a touch so we can see the other box is perfect. Okay. So at the top, it showed assessed value for that particular property. I picked a random property. This was very representative, though. I just kind of, it's residence, it's probably a little low on the values, actually, so most people probably median value is probably higher. But anyway, the point is the 5.4% change there. Again, this is very, very normal, which again coincides with what I was talking about from the previous slide. So let's go to the next one. Okay, this is this year's, this is this year's worksheet. So this will tell you that if we adopted the same rate, the average property owner would pay an additional 4%. Now, this is on top of the previous. This has a compounding effect. The 4% gets multiplied by what's already been increased by 5% roughly. And so that needs to be kept in mind. I put a little example at the bottom. You guys can look at that. The long and short of it is if you paid $1,000 in tax two years ago, you would pay $1,092 if we adopt the new proposed levy as proposed. So that's a 9.2% increase. That's where that comes from. Okay. So let's go to the next one. It's a little chart. I won't spend much on this. I just, for those who are curious, you'll have to really zoom out just a little bit. Anybody that wanted to see the exact values, so we know what the total levy was, but this actually splits it up into how much of the levy was applied to existing versus new property owners. And again, that, what, because of the rate wasn't exactly the same, it was actually a 5.299, or 229% increase last year, and then it would be another 3.815 on top of it, again, for a cumulative of 9.2. Okay. Done with all the charts. 9.2% I think is a lot. I think it's a lot over two years. When you consider over the same timeframe, 3% is about inflation over that same two years. So if you're on an income that you get cost of living adjustments based on inflation, this would not, you know, that adjustment wouldn't cover that change in your property tax. So Mayor, my position's obvious on this. I'm not supportive. So I'm going to try and move to reduce, and we'll use, you know, we've increased the general fund by millions and millions per year, and an additional 1.3 wouldn't be much at all. That would be like less than 10%, I think, of the total increase. So anyway, thank you, Mayor.
Any other councilmembers?
Mayor, I actually have a proposal. If I could have... If we could put that on the screen. It's actually a simple proposal. Yeah, this proposal I'll share with you is what I would call a compromise proposal, and I've chatted with Kelly a little bit about this. So right now, the way the proposed levy for, by staff is at 22.3 million, which leaves the rate right around about 1.06, which is very similar to what we had last year. My proposal is to drop the rate to 103, which would be about 21.65 million. This is kind of where I believe we can probably get some of the funding. It's basically a $650,000 use of two buckets of money. One of them is based upon what I would call the current levy savings that we've been kind of pulling from, from time to time, which is about approximately about $2 million. The projected general fund unrestricted and reserve savings that we're seeing, and again, this would be monies that I would call above and beyond what we have as it relates to savings, approximately about $5 million. So my thought is, we could transfer $300,000 from what I call the levy savings and $350 from the general fund savings for a total of $650,000. So the rate drops from 106 to 103. Again, this is my, my thought of compromise. It splits it right down the middle, and obviously I would propose that as a option three.
Thank you, Councilmember Cook. Does anyone else have any other options they would like to put out on the table? Oh, Councilmember Taylor.
I don't have any more options to add to the discussion. I think what we have, we have good material to work from here, four options, you know, with the staff proposal, so. But I do want to just give some thoughts here. Certainly, I'm not opposed, it's probably no secret that I'm opposed to any tax increase. I would like to see us roll back to where we were a couple of years ago. And when I look at what we've had to do to actually sustain that, with these, in last year's budget came additional headcount to actually manage these additional projects, and I think we're seeing that here again. So what that's signaling to me is we don't even have the capacity to do this work that they're asking for. And then we have such huge carryovers from year to year. So to me, it's not going to cause any pain in the community to dial back either one or two years, because we don't even have the capacity to do it. We're going to have to actually hire more or contract out to actually execute this. So that's why any of these options work for me. I'd like to roll it back two years, Mayor, but I just wanted to throw that thought out here for us to consider, to take a little bit of the fear out of seriously evaluating these. And I appreciate the two gentlemen who've put these ideas forward. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. We have four options and six people here to vote. So if we just do the math really quickly, we're all going to have to coalesce around one idea here in order to make this happen tonight. And it is critical that we make this happen because we do have a certain amount of time that we have to allow this to be heard publicly in order for us to move forward. So, Vice Mayor.
Mayor, may I suggest it might be easiest to simply take some motions in order rather than a bunch of amended. You can actually have an amendment to an amendment, and it gets pretty crazy. So I, just a quick comment, though. I had seen my proposal as already a bit of a compromise between what councilmember, and I'd love to reverse it, reverse slash years to, but mine was to at least three years where it was and prevent another increase. So I kind of saw that as the ground, maybe. It's only 650 off of what Councilmember Cook is proposing. If it's all right, I would like to, in fact, I can do this now unless I get interrupted somehow, but I'll just move to adopt a levy of 21 million. We'll see how that goes, and if it doesn't pass, we'll see.
Really quick before, we have a second. There are some other councilmembers who haven't yet had a chance to speak yet on this agenda item, so I just want to confirm, and I will ask for a second, so hold that motion in your head. Councilmember Taylor, Councilmember Peterson, I have a couple of things to add to, and I'm happy to jump in. One of them is that we do have 15 financial policies that we've adopted as a council, and using general fund dollars to buy down the levy is actually against one of our financial policies, which is to use our most restricted funds first. So if we were to move forward with buying down the levy, I also feel like from a fiduciary responsibility, I have to make note that this is exactly what the legislature was trying to avoid when they passed their legislation that ATRA sponsored in order for us to move forward. So they want the public to know exactly how much money local government is spending on projects. Now, all that being said, we still have, we still can do this. I just don't, I just want to make sure that we're aware of the fact that from a policy level perspective, if we're going to go against our own adopted financial policies, we should probably make a policy statement about that, or at least explain why this is a unique circumstance. I would prefer that we follow our financial policies and use our most restricted funds first, because I think that's wise, and that would be some of the reserve dollars that we have in the secondary property tax levy fund, for lack of a better term. I would prefer that we use that as the funding source rather than general fund, so that we can adhere to our wise financial policies that have gotten us this far. So that's my first comment about that. Is there any objection to using only...
Debt service fund balance?
Debt service fund balance.
We have a minimum balance policy.
Correct. So that's what I want to ask Kelly. How far can we go without stepping in and do need to... With some of your amazing analysts that I know are here.
Here, Council, I just need to do a quick, it would be 5% of our debt service, which is 22.3 million. So we need to keep 1.1 million in the account in order to meet that policy, and we have about 2 million in there now. So we have about a million, maybe a little shy, to buy it down and still have minimum fund balance.
Okay. So if we did that, this also takes this option off in future years, which, to be honest with you, I'd probably prefer that at this point, because we have the same conversation, we've had the same conversation ever since they changed, the state legislature changed it from a rate to a levy. And so I'm happy with that. Kelly, do you have any heartburn or objection over moving in that direction? And I should, maybe I'll rephrase that, because that's probably not a fair question for you, now that I think about what I just asked you. Recognizing that the proceeds of our, we've already, we're already prepared to spend this dollar amount because of the great refunding work that we've done. And I know, I think Councilmember Cook, you know how much money we've saved over the last, since 2013 or 2012? And how much money is that through refinancing and...
Well, you saw in an email that Kelly sent out today, that number, and it's over $20 million, just in, in just that alone, so.
So evidence that we are being wise stewards with tax dollars, I think, is the best way to describe that. Kelly, are you comfortable with 1.1 million remaining in that, recognizing that this is not an option next year? If we continue to use this money for repair and replacement of streets, we will not have this, and that's exactly what these dollars are for, all of it. We will not have that option next year to be able to buy down a rate, which means we will likely see a rate increase if we continue in this plan. Because under the current plan, you're at a $1.6...
Mayor, Council, that's...
For the next four years.
At, we have a levy of 22.3 million.
For the next four years, yeah.
Yes. This is the debt service that's required for the next six years, and so we can use fund balance to buy down. We would want to leave 1.1 million in there, so we would have at most $1 million to buy down the rate with if we wanted to maintain minimum fund balance. And then in fiscal '19, we will have the same quandary because our debt service in that year is 22.3 again. So the rate naturally declines over time as the assessed value grows, but the levy remains the same.
Councilmember Cook.
Mayor, the reason for me choosing the, what I would call the unrestricted and reserved savings is that you may recall last year, when we finished up our year, we actually ended up about $8 million in that bucket. And from the policy perspective, we decided to use that $8 million for the retirement portion. So I anticipate if we were to get the projected 5 million, we would have a very similar discussion as to what we would do with that 5 million. And again, all I'm asking is that $350,000 of that 5 million, again, it's just projected, be applied to this, so that we wouldn't have necessarily this discussion. But again, we're going to have a discussion of how we allocate those funds anyways, and I'm just saying, we just take that off. And in fact, this proposal that I have actually is, should be, in my view, over the next, what's it, three years, we will be at 103. So my thought is that we would hold this at 103 for the, I don't know, three or four years, but that was really the thought behind this as well.
So again, it is in violation of our financial policies. However, if between now and next year... However, if between now and next year, you want to, we want to change our financial policies to allow us to use, well, we wouldn't have that issue because there would be no more restricted funds available for us for our use. So you would go to the next funding source, which would be the general fund in order to backstop that. My recommendation is let's stick with our financial policies. Let's use $1 million of fund balance. I think if we can all coalesce around this, let's use $1 million from the secondary property tax reserve fund, still keep us within all of our financial policies. It lowers the rate for this year, and then we can have discussions next year whether we're going to use general fund dollars to buy it down, to keep it at that same rate, or some other proposal and process. What I'm trying to do is bring us all together to have, to coalesce around one idea. And I think I'm doing a hybrid of what you two both.
Yeah, and I think my thought was, instead of taking that whole $1 million, as you can see, for me, I only wanted to grab 300K. And that 300K would be used throughout the next three years or four years, which will get you to the near 1 million that you're taking. Because I just don't want, we do it all once and then next year, we're kind of in this really odd place. I want it spread out for the next three to four years. That's why I took a little chunk.
So the option that you're proposing is to just do 300,000 from levy reserves and no general fund?
Well, we need to come up with the additional 350K.
And that's a violation of our financial policy.
And again, I'm coming back to, again.
Okay, I just want to make sure that there's clarity there.
Sure, I understand that.
Mayor.
Yes.
Should we be slicing and dicing from the dais? Should we be only setting the preliminary budget at this point and moving forward and having these discussions before we come back next, for our next meeting? This is a lot to digest, if you will, with all of these options and all of this discussion, and it doesn't give our staff really quality time to discuss each of these options with us individually so that we can understand them better.
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, the levy can always be reduced at the next meeting. It's just established as the maximum possible levy.
Right. What I'm trying to do, though, is get us to where we have four votes in order to move forward. And that's the, that's the struggle that I'm having right now and why I'm trying to figure out a path forward, if you will.
Mayor, I agree with Councilmember Peterson that we don't need to be as complex as to determine the exact source. Tonight, we just have to adopt a preliminary levy. And so I'm open to doing just that and allowing the time for staff to come back. And they can recommend, based on some homework, the way they think it's best to meet the difference between our obligation and the levy. So I do agree with that. The other, I just want to make another comment, though. We also have a financial policy that says you shouldn't be, we cannot use one-time funds for ongoing expenses. And so, I mean, at some level, you could say that that debt service fund is very much a one-time revenue because it can't, well, it can be refilled only to the minimum balance. But for all intents and purposes, it really can't be, this is something that we all agreed on previously. So to use that for an ongoing, at least for the next four years, is also considered, so we're kind of painted into a corner, and I'll just point out that Councilmember Taylor and I tried to warn against adopting such a high, or issuing so much debt. We could have kept it within that, and we could have funded repair and replacement more as an ongoing thing. And that's the other thing I'd say is a violation of our financial policy, is to use what really is one-time funds, which is debt service, because you have to get authorization every time you do that for ongoing needs like repair and replacement. So if you want to talk about financial policies, I think there's all kinds of opportunities to point out violations. That aside, I think we can be less complex. Let's, let's move and adopt a levy. And then maybe staff can recommend how we fill the gap and we can agree or disagree or whatever at that point.
So the only challenge I'm having with that is I'm not sure we're all agreeing on what levy to adopt. And that is where I'm going to try to pull everybody together. So if everyone's willing to move forward with an adoption of 22.3 million, which is listed here, and then finding ways.
Mayor, point of order. I, I made a motion and didn't you second it?
There was no second yet.
Oh, sorry.
She hasn't called for a second yet.
We, there were councilmembers that hadn't had a chance to speak yet, so I was trying to get everybody to be able to have that dialogue. We'll have them repeat it, I think, when it's, when it's time. So if we want to move forward with 22.3 million and then have a conversation about how to pay for that levy, I think that that's something we can have a conversation about. I'm not sure I'd get four votes for that, so.
Mayor, let me just move to approve 21 million as a levy. We'll see what happens with that. That may need, well, I move to approve 21 million as the levy.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion and a second, please vote. That motion fails with a 4-2 vote. Is there another motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve a levy of 21.65 million.
Is there a second?
I might get strung up for this, but I'll second this.
All right, we have a motion and a second. So just for clarification, I'm just doing math really quickly. That's $650,000 less than the staff recommendation. So we have CIP projects that are outlined in that total levy amount. Do we need to, at this time, direct staff to find different funding sources for those? Not as part of this?
Mayor, Council, the bond proceeds are what we use to do those projects with. The debt service that's paid will not have an impact on what projects, the project funds that we use. So we will need to come up with secondary property tax money or other funding source, debt service reserve, or general fund in order to pay that debt.
Okay, so we still have to pay 22.3 million, but we're only going to be collecting 21.65 from the citizens?
Correct.
Okay.
Do you want to know what the equivalent rate is to the levies that you're?
I think it's 103-ish, 103-ish.
108.
1028? Okay.
I think Kelly was really impressed with my simple math to come up that quickly.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Now that we have a second, I'd like to have a little bit of discussion or at least make a point here before we vote here. Vice Mayor, last time we talked about this, made a really, really important point that I think is, is very germane here in terms of the process that we're going through to, you know, get to this. And the point, and he can correct me if I misstate this, was we're really looking at what our debt limit is and then filling the projects in. And that seems backwards. It is backwards. I mean, in the private sector, how we manage our homes, we look at the priorities of the projects and then see how much, we don't look at our credit card limit and see how much we can spend against that. I mean, essentially, the way that we pay for these projects is either debt or equity. I mean, those are the only two ways to pay for things in the world. And so I think we do need to take a really hard look at that. I think that was a very salient point to have a good discussion in maybe a financial retreat or a CIP retreat or study session or something, to really look at our priorities and let that drive this. Maybe it'll actually put us in a worse position, I don't know, but I think that's a better process for us as a council and doesn't put us in these really weird backwards decisions, Mayor.
So I can appreciate that perspective. I actually think, though, that we, our prioritizing, and that's why we have a much longer list of projects than we actually have funding for. And that's why we go through that extensive CIP process to decide, okay, what's next? What's the highest priority next? And when you look at those, the analysis that goes on for each individual project to determine the priority of that, we have more projects every year that we should be doing. We get a little bit farther behind, and frankly, we're still catching up from the downturn when we deferred a lot of projects. And I remember those days of deferring. And so with all due respect, I certainly can understand your perspective, but I do believe that we are prioritizing and not just looking for, okay, well, we have $22 million to spend, let's try to shove some projects in there. No, we have probably 38, 40 million with the projects that really we should be prioritizing, and yet we've prioritized it to make sure that we don't exceed what this council and what we believe as representing the public were comfortable with as a community.
Well, just one follow-up, and I know others want to comment here. When, when the Vice Mayor made the point, he talked about how there were, there were some projects that were deemed unnecessary, but then they were quickly backfilled with other projects. And I don't remember, maybe I missed the meeting, where we, as a council, worked and sustained the priorities that was recommended to and by staff. Your point is valid, that staff is certainly looking at that and all those priorities, but in terms of us ratifying that, I don't know that we have been a part of that. I mean, we just really opened the CIP discussion right now, so.
We had that, and maybe you did miss it, but we had an afternoon with the CIP team where there was conversation, and it was a posted, because they expected more than four of us to attend. So it was on a Wednesday afternoon where we had an opportunity to go prioritize with CIP team. And so there was an opportunity for that, and this is, that's the third year that we've done that, so.
Well, that was the public discussion, right? Not a council discussion?
It's council.
But open meeting law would have prohibited us from having.
No, it was a posted meeting. It was a.
So council, so did we, did the council talk about the priorities there or did we more listen?
We talked about priorities. There was a lot of.
All right, I do know that I was out of town on that one, so I appreciate the reminder on that. Thank you.
Mayor, one more comment. Again, my proposal, I am looking at it as a compromise. I know you're looking for four votes. If this doesn't move forward and someone does motion for the 22.3, I will not be voting yes on that.
Thank you for the heads up. All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. The motion is to adopt a $21.65 million secondary property tax levy. It's not to adopt it, excuse me, it's to.
Set the ordinance.
Thank you, set the ordinance. Appreciate that. To set the ordinance at 21.65 million, which is a rate of 1.028. All right.
And council will be considering that on June 29.
Correct. All right, we have a motion and a second, please vote. That motion carries with a 5-1 vote. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 12. Just for clarification, we are adopting tonight the maximum limit only, and that we will establish June 15, 2017, as the date of public hearing and adoption of the final budget. So this is setting the maximum limit, which means that if we move forward with a continued budget discussions between now and June 15, we cannot exceed whatever dollar amount we adopt tonight. Or accept tonight. Council?
Do you want it better?
Yeah, Kelly, let's have you start. Thank you.
Mayor, Council, I just have a very brief presentation if you'd like it. We've talked a lot and we had a lot of information at study sessions, so this is just a quick overview, remembering that Gilbert is growing, we're continuing to have population rise. As you're all aware and as the, hopefully the public knows, we do zero base, a third of the organization every year, and we were able to take out about $600,000 out of the budget through our zero base efforts this year. The staff puts together a recommended budget, about 25% of that was removed before it was brought together to you and what you see here. And so there's a lot that's left on the cutting room floor that we're waiting to finish finding business case on and true need before we bring it forward. One of the biggest questions is why is this budget bigger than last year's budget? So if we take the $850 million budget that we had last year, we subtract, we had 100 million in there for bond refunding that we don't need in the 2019 budget. We finished some CIP, we had one times and zero base. Those get caught by the umbrella and taken out. They are not brought forward into the 2018 budget. We bring forward the base budget and the CIP carryforward, so the money that we still need to do our CIP projects. And then we add in what's the new CIP that's planned, and we have 16 million of the new requests that we talked about that are also put into this budget, and that's how we come up with the $965 million proposed budget that is before you. So you can see majority of what's in that budget is the capital improvement projects, which we've seen, there's about $483 million of capital improvement projects. When we ask the next biggest question, where will this money be spent? A lot of it is on that CIP, so Phase 1 of both Gilbert Regional and Rittenhouse Park. These are the things that the citizens would see by passage of the budget. Greenfield wastewater plant expansion will go into construction phase in this next year and move forward. Fire Station 9 construction and the staffing of that building is planned for fiscal 18. Also, there's police staffing, about 16 FTEs that are planned in order to help supplement the needs in that area. And the public safety training facility design. Also, the second parking garage in the Heritage District, which would be on the east side of the street. We are aware that the enterprise funds are, have a deficit in their revenue and expenditure alignment, and so we are working on some rate adjustments in that area. We will have, we have one-on-one setup with the council members, we'll have a study session on May 18, which will be the first public information on that. And then we'll have public outreach in June and July. And then in August, we'll be looking to adopt some changes to our enterprise fund rates. Upcoming milestones, so we are talking preliminary budget, we do need to adopt the maximum expenditure for preliminary budget, and then we will have final budget adoption on June 15.
I think we got it all. All right, Council.
Mayor, we did have a request to speak.
Oh, terrific.
Do you want to do that now?
Yeah, let's do that first. Thank you.
We have Thurl Stapley, if you would like to come forward. Thank you for your patience. Apparently, we all like to talk, maybe I'll just say, I like to talk, and so we've taken a while to get to this point. Thank you for holding on. You'll have three minutes. Look to the lights for your cue. 30 seconds, the light will turn yellow, red, your time's up. Please state your name and whether or not you are a Gilbert resident for the record before you begin. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Thurl Stapley. I am a resident of Gilbert. I'm not sure. What did I do?
That's not correct. We'll fix it.
I'm not sure if this is the right venue and the right time. We just had a ballot procedure in our, for our PKID for Greenfield, no, 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 what is it? Anyway, where we live, which I was very unhappy with, and the letter that they sent us said we should, could come here, and they encouraged us to come here and participate. So if this is not the time or place to say what I'm about to say, I apologize and just stop me and push that red button. Circle G Meadows 3 was the name of the subdivision I was trying to think of, and pardon my voice. There are 143 homes in Circle G Meadows 3. It's also known as PKID 0706. My wife, Roberta, and I have lived on Encinas Avenue in this subdivision for almost 30 years. Perhaps a little history would be helpful. Decisions regarding Circle G Meadows 3 used to be made at annual meetings with town and Gilbert staff with an average of five to 10 property owners in attendance. Yes, that's a terribly low percentage, but that was reality. Votes at these annual meetings were binding on all 143 property owners, but hardly anyone not directly involved paid much attention as the items in question and the dollar amounts involved were not terribly important or costly. I'll refer to these meetings as old style. At the January 28, 2014, old style PKID meeting, the vote was 13 to 3 against any improvements. You can check the minutes. Less than a year later, October 21, 2014, a new voting process was introduced. Issues would continue to be discussed at the annual meetings, but then a ballot would be mailed to all property owners, and as usual, the vote results would be binding on all. I am confident this new process was intended to improve voter participation, but in actuality, it didn't help much. There must be reasons for this terribly low involvement. I have a couple of ideas, but they're just my opinion. October 21, 2014, so less than a year later, at an old style meeting with seven homeowners in attendance, a new master plan was introduced. Under the new voting procedures, it couldn't be voted on, but it was introduced. As part of the official meeting minutes, it states, quote, "Project needs to be phased over three years and DG to be minimized." In retrospect, it appears the push for a park was on. A little over a year later, October 28, 2015, the minutes, meeting minutes state, "An ADA sidewalk will be required if there is a future installation of a Ramada or changes updates to the playground." This did not happen yet, an ADA sidewalk somehow was added. January 15, getting a little more current. After a neighborhood meeting with staff and at their general invitation to all in attendance, I personally emailed 12 suggestions for the ballot they were preparing. Staff acknowledged receipt of my suggestions, but none of my suggestions were included in the final ballot mailed. Ballots were mailed, yikes. Was it yellow first?
Is it okay if we give you about 30 more seconds, though?
Yes, that would be great. Without going into all the details, I'm very disappointed at the way this. Without going into all the details, I'm very disappointed at the way this ballot process I don't have time to tell you, but there was a ballot for the exact same things a couple months prior. Even though it was suggested that there be an option 5 to not do anything, staff ignored that and did not include it, so I created an option 5 and distributed it to all the homes, again, without going into all the details. When it was, the votes were all tabulated, option 5, not to do anything, in fact, to stop, got 21 votes, three times more than any of the other options. And yet somehow, staff determined that that was illegitimate, improper, not valid, whatever, but they went ahead and had three meetings, I think, anyway, additional meetings to then create another ballot. And this time, they included an option 5, but it had no resemblance to my option 5, because a lot of construction had already been done. Real quick, please let me finish this, this part. Those 21 ballots were tabulated and verified that they were option 5, and I have copies of option 5. I was going to give you all one, but I don't have time to even walk up there. If those ballots were not valid, and they didn't need to have any of these follow-up meetings, didn't even have to have this additional ballot, why did we do that? But since option 5 ballots, the 21 were valid, they went ahead and had these other meetings and went through this joke of this last ballot and changed the whole thing, and I got a lot of details I'd like to share with you, but I don't have time. I'm here to protest this last ballot. I think it was wrong. You can't even read the text, it's done so terribly. There's things left out, you can't tell. I wish I would, I could take a lot more time. So I am protesting that ballot again, I don't know if this is the right place to do that, but it should not count. If we do anything, we ought to go back to the prior ballot. It was 21, what I'm going to call write-in votes for option 5, and it said, "Do nothing." Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Thurl. At this point, and I think a lot of us have been copied on your emails, Thurl, so I think we might have more information than we, than you might think on that. So I will ask, maybe Mark Skacipic, if you could please meet with Thurl for just a few minutes and make sure that we get his contact information, and you can follow up with him. I know that he's worked closely with Rod Buchanan and others that operate that process. I know there's been several meetings, so we'll continue to do what we can, Thurl, to assist in making sure that your voice is heard. Thank you. All right, so we've had public comment, and we have also had our presentation from Kelly, and that turns it now to council. And so if we could turn it to the council for dialogue, and the budget is an important topic, and what we'll do, Councilmember Cook, would you like to start?
Well, I don't want to start, I just want Kelly to provide some clarification. Is there a way for you, Kelly, to pull up the page in our communication? And it's basically the Town and Gilbert expense summary fiscal year 2017, 2018. I think here it says page 1. What I want to just have you do for me is that last year, we adopted a budget of $850.5 million, and in this particular chart, it will show what the projected expenses are going to be. And if you, again, toward the very bottom of that page is the totals. If you can just zoom in on the very, very bottom, just zoom in so we can all see it really, really big. And maybe a little bit, a little bit more, because, you know, as I get older, my eyes are kind of weak. Oh, yeah, there we go, that looks good. All right, so you see there, the $850 million, 850 point, you know, I would say $5 million, that was the adopted budget that we had last year, and of course, we had a lot of public comment on that, and I actually went through, you know, the last five years of adopted budgets that I've voted in favor of. But the question really is, is that one to the right, the 650, see, wait, 365 million, which is going to be the projected expenditure. Now, for the public, why there's such a big difference? Because we adopted 850, but we're only going to spend 365. And I keep on telling, you know, folks that even though we adopt a budget, you should really measure us on our expenses at the end of the day. And if you look at our expenses from year to year to year, you know, we're pretty much in that ballpark from year to year to year. Can you explain to the public why there's such a large delta? If we adopted that budget of $850 million, but we're only going to spend 365, that's, it seems like we're missing some forecasting or something, and it makes the public really nervous, and they just are not clear. Could you just spend a little bit of time talking about that?
Certainly. Mayor, Councilmember Cook, you are exactly right that we have to budget for a higher amount. In Arizona, when we set the expenditure limit like we are proposing to do tonight, we cannot spend even $1 or one penny more than that in the budget year. And so because of that, as a municipality, we have to build in some ability, some flexibility to plan for unexpected. And so we put some contingencies in the budget. We hope that we don't have to spend them, but if there were to be a natural disaster or some, even an opportunity that comes up to purchase something that we hadn't planned for, that we have the ability to do that in the budget so that council has those full options available. Another item that is affecting this difference is because, because of our strong financial policies, when we plan CIP projects, and we agree to move ahead on design or construction of those projects, for example, the Santan Vista Water Treatment Plant, we make sure that we have the full funds available for the entire contract that we are agreeing to before we sign the contract. Even though Santan expansion is a multi-year project, so we know that we're going to be carrying funds forward that we plan budget for, but that we won't spend fully in that year. So there are lots of reasons like that why it would come in lower than what's, than what we plan. And so you are correct in your, in one of your statements earlier, that the more accurate way of looking at the budget is the past year's actual expenses.
Because I know in the private sector, you know, Wall Street would like go real excited about seeing that type of cost savings, but maybe the CFO might get fired because they're obviously not accurately forecasting. So I know it's just kind of hard for the public to understand that even though we adopt, adopt such a large budget, in fact, even the number, even this coming fiscal year is even higher than that $850 million. I always try to share with the public that if you really look at our expenses over the last six years, the actual dollars that we spend is pretty much about that number. In fact, when Vice Mayor Peterson, Councilmember Ray, and Mayor Daniels, when we came on board and approved the 2012 budget, that actual expense that was used that year was actually $337 million. And if you compare that to this number, that's only an 8% increase over the last, you know, six years. So I, again, I just wanted to share that with the public, that really, these adopted budgets, I know that it looks really strange, but at the end of the day, we really should be, you know, looking at what we actually spend. I mean, if you want to grade me on a report card, that would be the number for me to look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cook. Vice Mayor Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. And first, I want to apologize for interrupting with a point of order that wasn't even accurate. It was very nice of me. It wasn't intentional, though, I assure you. I know. Thank you for being so forgiving, I really appreciate it. So I want to make a quick comment about that slide that Kelly had just shown us. When you have an actual expenditure of almost a third of the total budget authority, you're basically authorizing money three times faster than staff can figure out how to spend it. And look, contingency is important, and I support some level of contingency, but at that scale of difference, I really do think we're kind of exceeding the whole point of a budget, which is to constrain spending. And so I just have to disagree a little bit with Councilmember Cook on that being a positive thing, being that big of a delta. There should be some, but that's just, I think that's not a good, not a best practice. Certainly wouldn't be, just to talk about in the private sector, if you were that far off, as you said, there would be some real problems. Can we show my slide real quick? And then I'm going to be very fast, and I'm going to be done. Yeah, bread. I know, you're looking forward to the bread slide.
I feel like this is an annual budget tradition.
You know what? I was thinking about maybe not doing it, but I figured people would be like, feeling like something was off. Something was off. All right, so I'm not going to spend a ton of time, you guys have seen this before, but there's some key points. First of all, the orange line, or orangish line, is sort of the color of the bread, because that kind of represents inflation, or how most goods and services are increasing in price, okay? The blue line is actuals. So to Eddie's point, if it was just, now, first of all, this is general fund only, this is ongoing only, and this is divided by the number of citizens we have. So this is a rate of spending per citizen, okay? So this is not the be-all and all, but I think this is, this is an important metric. And so the blue line shows the actuals, and you'll see, just look at 10 years ago, where we were, how far away we had gotten, from where I think should be more where we are. Like most goods and services, we should probably basically be following inflation. And so back then, there was a proposal for a tax increase, of course, the market got, you know, soft, and things were difficult, but we have to remember, the economy does have cycles. And so the gray line is where we would be, that's the budgeted ongoing, okay? So I don't have the actuals for fiscal year 17, that's why you don't see the blue line go all the way, and I certainly don't have them for 18, that's the one we're talking about. So anyway, but if you do the distance between the gray line, where it's proposed to go now, and inflation, it's almost exactly where we were a few years ago. And so I'm concerned with that trend, and I'm especially concerned when you consider our budget does not designate, still does not designate, an ongoing revenue source for an ongoing need that we have, which is our streets repair and replacement, that's $10 million a year. So with that, I'm done, I've already talked about everything else, I don't support the way, the trends were going.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Peterson. Councilmember Peterson, any comments on the budget tonight? Councilmember Anderson?
One question, Kelly. Whether we're in a downturn in the economy or a vibrant economy, we are required to have a balanced budget by state law, is that correct?
Mayor, Councilmember Anderson, yes, we do have to balance our budget.
I think that's an important fact to remember, that we do work within a balanced budget, unlike some of the other levels of government are not able to do that, but we do, and it's required by law, and I think we should remember that as we adopt these budgets. One thing that I would like to ask, Patrick, you and I have talked a little bit about, in the staffing requirements, we've talked about lean, smart lean, and foolish lean in staffing. I'd like you to talk a little bit about our staff. Are we, are we smart lean, are we foolish lean? How is the staff morale? What kind of a package is included in this budget to address staff needs and staff? I know things that they are interested in, in this budget.
Sure. Mayor and Councilmember Anderson, we just recently are wrapping up our long-range staffing forecast so that we have a better guide to understand what our needs are going to be as our community continues to grow and in different market sectors, and certainly, we use historical data to project that forward to try to understand what those drivers will be by, by position and need. The staff requests you have before you this year, you're going to see a heavy emphasis on public safety, police in particular. We have a need, over the last year, we've been running, I would characterize it as too lean in our staffing ratios in our police department, so we have a stated need to add additional bodies primarily at the patrolman rank, but as well to provide for necessary leadership and span of control in those areas, so they get the proper guidance and mentorship and oversight they need. But by area, it varies. We did some investments in our capital projects group last year, as you recall, to get that group in a better prepared position to handle the number of projects that we have coming up in the next fiscal year as well, as well as several years beyond that. But we do talk about that on a regular basis to try to gauge how we're doing, are we impacting service levels, are we impacting the quality of life that our residents receive, as well as our workforce themselves? And are we asking a reasonable amount of work out of them on a daily basis, given that some days, some weeks, there are special situations, special projects in which need and demand surges a little bit, and we shift and adjust for those? But we can't treat a marathon like a sprint, day in and day out, and we do have some departments where we're really running staff too hard, I would say, and we need to provide for some necessary relief in those areas. We monitor it on a department-by-department, division-by-division, case-by-case basis, and all the directors that are here tonight would be prepared to talk about any of the staffing requests that they've made, and how that is going to impact their department and impact the services that they deliver.
Thank you. And we just recently completed a class and comp study, I think, and how's that been received by my staff?
I think all in all, it was something that is based on the market, and so some positions did see some movement in the market and see some adjustments, other positions did not see movement in the market and did not receive adjustments at all. We also have the paper performance system that we will work, handle through our valuation system, which is ongoing right now, our annual appraisals, and that rewards employees for work in which they go above and beyond the expectations for that standard baseline level of service to our employees. So I think the employees are appreciative of that and appreciative of the recognition of their hard work, but we'll continue to monitor that as well to make sure that we are within a reasonable range of the market so we can attract and retain and maintain the workforce that we need. And again, that varies by department. In our water department right now, we've got several neighboring municipalities who are bringing new water plants online that are similar in nature to ours, and they are actively pursuing our workforce in those areas. And those are not individuals that are easily found, and there's a lot of certifications depending on the position that are necessary, and so we have to also weigh it on a case-by-case basis to make sure that we can maintain that workforce that we're going to need to deliver the services.
It seems that over the past few years, we've been losing a lot of institutional knowledge. How do we, what's the cost to get that back, if at all?
Yeah, we have, we've had, and we will continue to experience some retirements from employees that have been with this town for quite some time and are now reaching the point where they're ready to retire and move on with the next phase of their life. We are being poached in some of those areas by other agencies that are losing senior staff as well, and desire to bring on a more seasoned employee with more experience and knowledge to either head up a department or head up a division or a key manager role. And it is a challenge for us, and we're continuing to look at ways. We have had, we have high hopes for Jolene, our new chief talent officer, who's going to help us understand how we can best develop this young staff that we're bringing on and get them to a position to where they are ready to take on larger roles with us, but it takes time to train those employees, get them accustomed to our systems, and in some cases, will never replace some of the knowledge that's been lost by some of our longtime employees, again, who are leaving for a myriad of reasons.
Thank you.
Jolene, we don't just have high hopes for you, we have confidence in you, so I just wanted to make sure that wasn't the last thing you heard tonight.
Jolene, we're just going to leave that at high hopes. We'll see where it goes from there.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, that's, that was an important clarification, thank you for that. Well, Kelly, maybe you can help me on a couple of things, because I want to clarify some things that I learned on this that I think are important here. First off, let's go to the zero-based budget... First off, let's go to the zero-based budgeting slide. And the thing I want to point out here that I think is important is, there was some zero-based budgeting, but not, in my opinion, a material zero-based budgeting. So what this represents is the non-labor piece of these departments. And that's great work there. There's no question that that's great work, but it's incomplete work to say that we're a zero-based budgeting organization, because there was only a few departments, and it was only a fraction of the money within those departments. So I think that's important. I mean, the big money's in labor, and that has to be included in the zero-based budgeting process, or you're not really doing it. I mean, I'm not saying this is bad work. This is excellent work. And we should look at all of the budgets when we're doing zero-based budgeting. So I think that's a miss in this process, and it's important for us to understand that. Then I want, we talked about contingency, and Kelly, can you just say what, what's the dollar amount of the contingency in there versus, you know, the amount that's committed for like the treatment facility? What dollar amount are we actually talking about?
Sure. Mayor, Councilmember Taylor, there is a CIP contingency, which doesn't have actual dollars behind it. We would have to have the revenue to back that up, but it is the budgeted expenditure contingency of $100 million. In the general fund, we have contingency, which actually has dollars in the bank behind it, of $10 million for general and $5 million for economic development. There's additional contingency in the water and wastewater and different funds. I just don't have those numbers on the top of my head. I could find them for you and get them.
So 200 million is contingency? Half is funded, half is not? Is that?
That would be a good ballpark.
Very round? Okay. So I appreciate those. I'm not going to hold you to the exact numbers. That is a lot of contingency. I, it should be in there. There's no question about it. I agree with the previous comments. That does worry me a little bit that some of it's contingency, but not funded contingency, because then that would put us in a really tough spot to come up with some of that unfunded contingency unless I'm missing.
There's a really good reason for that, because I asked the same question yesterday. Kelly, do you want to touch on the potential refunding?
So, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you.
There are some, for example, a refunding. There's potential refunding with our 2009 PFMPC bond. If we use contingency, then we have the expenditure because we sell the old bonds, we pay them off, and then we have, we have new revenue that comes in to do that. So there's revenue to offset it, and the only time we would use CIP contingency is when there's that revenue offset where we don't need, or we have the dollars coming from another source to do that. So we don't have the...
So a new, a new bond issuance?
Right. When you refund bonds, you actually sell new bonds.
Right, right.
Get money, and then pay off the old bonds with the money. So the new money coming from the new issue would be the money backing the CIP.
It's not an increase. It's normally just to get a lower interest rate. I just want to make sure that's clear. It's not, we're not getting more money.
I'm familiar with it, yeah. Again, yeah, you're just refinancing the loan, you know? So, okay, very good. Thank you. The other, the other part about this budget that concerns me is something that you've heard from me before, the amount of new hires that we're asking for. Now, I definitely support some of the public safety items, fire station number nine and to staff that, certainly support that. And some of the police staffing, I do want to look at that a little bit more, but in general, I think I'm supportive of that as well. Because I agree with the comment that we've probably been a little bit lean on that, but there's some areas in here, like I've pointed out before, that are unnecessary. And when we talk about lean staffing, we haven't actually applied lean staffing to what we're talking about. So let me give you the examples I've raised before, right? We have a fire inspection process. This is really outdated. We're, we're inspecting a lot of businesses that, you know, every year that probably don't need an annual, maybe a couple, you know, every other year. There's probably some that actually need more frequent things. I've asked Patrick in chief to look at that. I'd love to see that information, but we hired based on really old processes that are outdated. And so you heard me take exception to that. There's been fire inspectors that really give special events a hard time as well, with a lot of unnecessary time and waste that, that really we shouldn't see in, in this town. Last year, you know, we had a social media analyst parked $40,000 above market in there, and we approved it. And hopefully, that person could get the live stream on, because I'm tired of getting the text about this thing not being livestreamed. I get a couple of those things in here.
It's a different department.
Okay.
But we've, we've definitely been working on it.
Well, let it be said that this digital media department does a lot of good work, but they're about the same size as a $30 billion corporations, digital marketing corporation, which I think is excessive for what we need and what our purposes are. That's my opinion on it. This time, we have some, some additional overhead that I think is unnecessary. Let me give you another example, the tourist analyst, $114,000 fully loaded analyst, right? It's probably $60,000 to $80,000 more than a regular analyst would be paid in the marketplace. That's really not appropriate. And the other thing that we shouldn't approve something like that for is, we don't have a tourism strategy, right? That's down the agenda, is to have it. So why are we loading headcount when we don't have a tourist strategy? I mean, that, this is a little bit, I know the argument's going to be, well, we're going to hire it once we load the strategy, but what that also presumes is that we're in the tourism business. And I know some people think that that's the role of this government. I don't think that, I don't think so. So I certainly take exception to that, but at least the process and the strategy should be in place before. And even if we do hire it, it should be at the market rate, not $60,000 above what you would hire an analyst in the market rate. I mean, that comp is totally out of line. But, but what we're seeing here, we've got to learn from history here, because we cannot buck the economic cycles. And, you know, those of us that were following the town and its spending patterns in 2007, we're very concerned, and we're very vocal on it. And we said specifically, I said specifically, we're spending way too much. And if you could put Victor's slides back up, this is what we were concerned about. And the delta of those lines is the weight of the government. And basically, we're just taking more and more and more. And the only thing that's been forcing us to make a correction is when the business cycle comes down. And I know we all talked to the industry, but, you know, just as recently as, you know, last week, developers are not saying if, it's when. I mean, they're all buckling down for this. And so we're going to be forced to adjust back in there. We cannot buck these cycles. And I, our plan, it presumes a $5 million growth in sales tax year over year, and that's consistent with the recent pattern, but not the pattern where you have a dip coming in a couple of years, right? And so our budget doesn't plan for the future, long-term, where business cycles hap, economic cycles happen. So if we continue with this type of spending and putting more, I mean, for one thing, we shouldn't be putting more and more of the burden of government on our residents. The whole idea of economies of scale is when your base grows, it actually should lighten. And that's one thing that is just baffling to anyone in economics, is that the only industry that does not really see economies of scale is government. It always gets more and more expensive, whereas others, you can spread costs over your base when your base grow. I mean, that's just axiomatic in, in economics. And so, but we're just not seeing it here. And we should see it, because we have more people contributing, and land values are contributing more. So this is something that I think should worry staff. I know we think we're, we're overstressed, and the reason why we're overstressed is because we're appropriating so much and putting so much, so many projects on. And I, I think that's bad management practice, to, to put so much on our staff. I think we should put on staff what we can reasonably do. That's another downside of appropriating so much money and having so much, you know, of the, of the projects on, because it is stressing us, right? And that's why we have, so we're in this treadmill, well, then we got to hire more, then we got to do more and hire more, you know? What the economy's going to do is just force us to correct. And I guess I'm just trying to say, instead of having, having us make such hard, Mayor, you were here during those. I watched it. It wasn't fun. I was honored to be on the, on the Citizens Budget Committee. Those were tough discussions, and I know it was tough on staff to go through all of that. And so that's part of what I'm trying to, to do here, is to kind of right-size things, bring a little bit of reality from the market as to what overhead level should be reasonable to what we can actually even do, so we don't have that pain coming up in, in a couple of years or whenever, you know, things hit. I'm not trying to be an alarmist or anything. It's just reality. That's the history. Those are all staff numbers there. Mayor, the last thought I would just conclude or echo from a previous comment is, a lot of what's driving this is, you know, additional debt spending versus equity spending. And I'd love for us to consider more on the equity side. There's certainly a role for debt, a good role. And as you point out regularly, we've done a good job in terms of bringing that down and that load, and I commend Patrick and your staff for doing that. But anyways, those are a couple of thoughts. I do think this is a little bit high. I'm going to leave it at that, and Mayor, appreciate the time.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. I think I'm the last one to speak, and I will be brief. Here's what I love about the budget. I love that every single tax dollar for our citizens is accounted for. So there is no hidden pot of money. There is no confusion about what we're doing annually with the tax dollars that we're entrusted with. And I feel like that transparency and that accountability is one of the most important jobs that we have, and I thank staff for assisting us with that. One thing I always think about when it comes to budget is service level, because we're at the policy level, and yes, it's our responsibility to adopt budgets, but I'm always thinking about service levels. Are our service levels set at an appropriate level in order to be able to accomplish what our citizens have asked us to do? And based on this budget, based on the CIP plan, based on the prioritization that we've gone through, based on the needs of the community, based on the growth of the community, I do feel that we have set our service levels at an appropriate spot, and we are funding to those service levels. And to me, that's the most important part of this. If we would like to discuss the reduction of service level or maximizing in a responsible way the service level, then I think those are really healthy conversations for us to engage in and finding ways to that. I am comfortable at this point with setting the maximum limit amount, recognizing, and I'm very much appreciating the point that Councilmember Cook made about 30 minutes ago about the importance of the actuals when we're having the dialogue within the community. Our community is still growing. We are very close to being the fourth largest community in the state. So that is a remarkable place to be and somewhere we'll be probably for at least a decade. This community is still growing. While it's growing, we need to meet the needs of the residents, and I do believe that we're doing that in a very responsible way, and again, in a transparent and accountable way to the public. So with that, I will close the public hearing on Agenda Item 12 and entertain a motion.
Mayor?
Councilmember Peterson?
I move to accept Agenda Item 12. Acceptance of the preliminary budget is stated in our packet tonight.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. And just a reminder, this is setting the maximum limit, that on June 15th, we will have our final conversation about the budget. And I would expect that we'll have much longer agenda as we do usually in June. So this was a great dialogue for us to have tonight, and I appreciate everyone coming so prepared to have that dialogue. All right, please vote. That motion passes with a 4-2 vote. Thank you. All right. I will adjourn the special meeting and reconvene our regular meeting. That leads us to administrative items, and we have taken care of Agenda Item 13 already. That leads us to 14 boards, commission, and committee reports from council.
Mayor?
Yes.
Planning Commission had a very long meeting last night. I think they finished up around 11:00 PM with several intense discussions, including the sign code. I have to admit that I bugged out about 9:00, and, because I knew we'd be here long tonight, and I had a long day today. So I haven't seen the whole thing, but I plan to go back and watch their discussion on the sign code so that I can bring that information when we have that discussion here.
Thank you. And Mike, just for clarification, that date of final hearing is that May 18th?
Yes.
So that's our opportunity to hear the sign code and get a sign code in place in the town, which is exciting. Anyone else on boards, commission, and committee reports? I have one for council, and I will pass these out. This is the 2017 strategic business plan for the Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport. There's a tremendous amount of information in here, including the fact that we received the record of decision from the federal government about the northeast 700 acres of the Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport, and that opens up some opportunities for us, both as a community and as a region. And I wanted you each to have a copy of this. There's some really good information in here. Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, I know you sit on this board. Is there an update? I haven't heard an update in terms of the terminal on the other side. You know, we, we appropriated some money to support that. Can you just give us a quick update on the status there?
You bet. So the monies that we contribute on an annual basis is really our share, that someday will turn into what we believe will be profit sharing in the airport, but supporting that asset is really important. So there is no current timeline for the northeast 700 acres, which is where that terminal would locate. There's some preliminary plans, but what we're really looking for is some partners in order to facilitate that, and I think it will come in the form of some private businesses and, and private entities that are looking for ways to invest in airports and are doing so all over the world.
Thank you.
Wish I had a date for you. Any other boards, commission, and committee reports? All right, future meetings. There is one agenda item on here that I wanted to just check with. We had a May 4th policy to use Uber Lyft. It's my understanding we just needed a little bit more staff time in order to gather that information. Patrick, can you give us, or provide us in the future with an updated date on that particular agenda item?
Mayor, yes, we will.
Thank you. Any communications report from the town manager on current events? Oh, yes.
I'm sorry. While we're on the future meeting, if I remember from last council meeting, this one, we were supposed to get dates on these other items. I didn't see them come forward. I, I know it was a quick turnaround, but are those forthcoming?
Mayor, Councilman Taylor, they are, staff just got them to Lisa after the cutoff, when she had to publish the agenda, so those will be on there for the 18th.
Oh, okay. And Mayor, I don't know if, if we could just get those in advance via email?
Yeah.
If that would be okay?
Sure.
And Mayor, just one other thing, I don't know if, it's probably future meeting. When Councilmember Canlam is here, one of the last things he asked for was to do benefits audit specifically on prescriptions. I'd like to know if we have that or need to put that on here, if, if that's work in progress or we can, I don't want to get that lost. I thought was, that was an important request.
So there's a three-year rotation on audits through the Health Trust. So I, what I'll do is just direct you to have a conversation with Kristen Drew about that rotation, because we do a, a audit, there's an audit on the individuals, there's an audit on the system, and then there's an audit on prescriptions, and we rotate those. So I'll have you get with Kristen on when that cycle's coming up again. All right, thank you. Communications report from the town manager. I think you have something especially significant that Eric Braun brought to our attention.
Mayor, members of the council, yes, I do. Two quick items. First, the town has officially launched our 311 See Click Fix app, and that will help us better track and monitor the requests that come in from our citizens for various things, such as potholes, such as streetlights out, such as problems they see in the community. You can find that on the Android and Apple App Stores. Just put in Gilbert 311. You can also find it, there is a large button on our homepage of our website to enter those, to provide that information to us. Also, with the South Recharge Site, we have for years been dealing with, and the residents been dealing with, a midfly problem down there that had to do with improper recharge rates in the riparian, which was leaving water standing for too long. We did a project that essentially just cut some through the soil that was the, the more clay-type soil that was not allowing the water to percolate through like it should. And prior to the project, the site could only handle 1.9 million gallons per day, and that would cause the standing water to remain in the basin for many days. Post-enhancement testing increased that rate to almost 12 million gallons per day, which is far beyond the design capacity of the site. We do expect that, that rate to go down over time and find an equilibrium, but even a large decrease would still yield excellent results. We'll continue to evaluate and watch that site over the next winter to make sure the rate holds. But at these rates, we have been able to now recharge the water. It does percolate in time, and we have not had any ongoing issues with midflies any longer. So that was a great project. We thank everybody that was involved with that, Eric, Jessica Marlowe, and the entire team in Public Works.
I think that was CIP contingency dollars?
That was CIP.
Well, you know, Mayor, you know, Patrick and I, you know, we went down there and... Well, you know, Mayor, you know, Patrick and I, you know, we went down there, and we got attacked, well, I mean, I remember even inviting, you know, getting invited by a resident to, you know, eat at their home to see the amount of midflies, but, you know, it was a funny story, I remember when Mark, I mean, Patrick and I were there, we were watching this car come across the, you know, the riparian.
Yeah.
And we didn't know, I was going to call PD, who in the heck was that, and it was Mark Horn, he was out there looking it over, and so anyways, the team, fantastic job.
Thank you. Thanks, Patrick, for the update. Any report from council on current events? And you heard mine already, so we will, at this point, recess the regular meeting and reconvene in executive session upstairs, so Room 233. Thank you all, and again, thanks to our council for working so hard to make sure that the needs of our citizens are met, I am extremely grateful for each of you.